Yes, Mike Conforto put his elbow into the pitch and took a hit by pitch to win the game. In the strike zone, so it should have been strike three. It was good to see O'Neal hit a homer over. His first first hit. Oh man, he's getting, oh, gotta get him. Didn't feel good. Neil had a, and then they walked the door, potentially walked the door.
I know, I know.
What would be called? Oh, it's excluded. So do you think about having?
Okay, everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. We welcome for us to join us on the club. Congratulations. Before anybody asks, Mr. McFannan and I did not get two for one deals on the suit. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for joining us. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Dennis. Okay, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on an agenda? Thank you. Can I have the motion for the approval of minutes of the March 23rd, 2021 planning session?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel? Mr. Taylor?
May I have a motion for the approval of the spring 2021 high school coaches as listed on your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the spring 2021 middle school coaches as listed on your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Morrison, work in my.
Good evening. The New York State Education Department recently announced that it will be administering four Regents exams in June in order to comply with the federal ESSA Act. We will be providing the English Language Arts Regents, the Biology Living Environment Regents, the Earth Science Regents, and the Algebra I Regents. All students that are currently enrolled in those courses will be expected to take the Regents exams on the dates that they are being given. If a student fails the exam, but he or she has a passing grade for the four quarters, he or she will still pass the course for the year. So it's really whole harmless for our students. It provides them with a great opportunity to have exposure and experience with the test-taking process. It provides information to our staff in regard to our instructional practices and how our students are performing. And it really does not have any negative impact on our students. So we're looking forward to seeing those exams come June. The AP exams will be administered digitally again this year. The West Side School District is going to administer them. The third session, which is scheduled to start on or about June 1st. This will provide students with additional instructional time in order to prepare for the exam. Sometimes we start earlier sessions at the beginning of May or mid-May, but because of the circumstances this year, we wanted students to have as much instructional time as possible, so we will be starting them on or about June 1st. Individual assessment, or IAs, for each course will take the place of IB exams this year. IAs could consist of oral performances, portfolios, lab reports, or essays depending on the particular course. The IA is evaluated by the subject area teacher and then submitted to the IB for final review. The 3-3-8 ELA and math tests are going to be coming up at the end of April and the beginning of May. Only session one of the test will be given. The amount of time to take session one is decreased this year due to an omission of the field test questions and a reduction in the total number of questions. Building principals recently sent a letter home to all 3-8 parents apprising them of the testing process. Thank you, Mr. Geller.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. And Mr. Antonello will discuss the meeting of the Education Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Good evening, everybody. The Education Committee met yesterday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM. Education Committee members in attendance, myself, Mrs. Bernadette Burns, Mrs. Amory LaRosa, Mr. Peter McCann, Mrs. Dawn Morrison, other administrators, Mrs. Lisa Pilati, Mr. Brian Taylor, other board members, Mr. Ron McGinnis, Mr. Steve Geller, Mr. Tom Campanello, and Mr. Anthony Tussin. The first item discussed was the update on the AP and the IB exams. The staff is currently working on the best way to assess the kids based on the academic changes caused by COVID. It was decided that the most appropriate way to assess the kids for the AP would be in June. In regards to the IB specifically, feeling is that students should submit independent assessments to the teachers, and that would be the most accurate way to assess them academically because of the interruption of student COVID. The second item discussed was the Regents exams. The exams are canceled for August, but ELA, Bio, Living Environment, Earth Science, and Algebra will be given in June. And there was a rumor that the tests were optional, but they are not optional. The third item discussed was the FLAC exams. The Language Department wants to institute its own performance assessment to close out the year. The fourth item discussed was the Class of 22 CSIP requirements. We discussed adjustments, hourly adjustments due to the academic interruptions because of COVID, down to 25 units for the Class of 2022. The fifth item discussed was the 3-8 ELA and math tests. Only one session of these tests will be given, multiple choice will be administered. There is expectation that there'll be a large amount of opt-outs this year. The sixth item discussed was the 2021-2022 pre-kindergarten program. We discussed instituting a full-day pre-K program with the recent addition of state eight. The seventh item discussed was the 2021-2022 Little Lions Program. We discussed restarting the program, back to the way it was intended pre-COVID. The last item discussed was the elementary school classroom printers. Printers will be removed from the elementary school classrooms in an attempt to save money on COVID. And the meeting ended at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello. And Mr. McCann will discuss the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, yesterday, at the 7th, at 7:30 PM. All board members were in attendance. Administration and tenets were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Pilati, Mr. Taylor. The first item on the agenda, which was the new state eight grants, came out just as we were sitting there. So Mrs. Pilati will update the budget numbers from that and put analysis together for us shortly. We also went through the Treasury Report, district funds and the actual critical funds from February. We approved, we reviewed the payroll summary and the financial statements from February as well. We have a payroll certificate, payroll certification for the March 19th. We reviewed the warrants, and we approved some board member finance items that we'll be talking about approving tonight. The approval of general budget transfers, the approval of a donation of a rock display from the Manitowoc Elementary School, approval of a surplus Ford truck that will be auctioned off, approval of two health service contracts, approval of several bid extensions, and the approval of a health, two health services contracts will be, Mrs. Pilati will cover. The Finance Committee adjourned at 7:45 PM.
And Mr. McCann will continue with the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller, again. Building and Grounds Committee met right after the Finance Committee, at 7:45 PM. All board members were in attendance. Administrators in attendance were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Pilati, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bossi, and two representatives from BBS, which is our outside architectural consulting firm. We discussed with them the full building generator costs for the Beach Street School. We're looking at putting a backup generator for district office and potentially covering some of the Beach Street property to start project this summer. They've got plans, SED approval, got to go back and resubmit the plans to get approval, but that'll give us coverage so that if power goes out, we'll have power for our communications, our telephone systems, and our computer systems here. We finished the generator project at Manitowoc, which is our redundant backup, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have two different sets of generators that runs the district in case we lose power in the town. We talked about a warehouse store at the high school that needs to be replaced. The BBS will take a look at that and give us specs on that warehouse store. We took, we finished a part of the bomb project, we finished the coal javelit bathroom, and that was for the most part, and we talked about the Eagle Scout program, Open Oak. One of our local community members is looking to do an Eagle Scout program at Open Oak, put in some benches. The last item we discussed in length was the Masara property. So as you all know, as has been discussed many times here, that the budget, the sale of the property to the developer was stripped down in January. So we've discussed starting up another process to bring in the community members and to start a process to understand what we can do with that property. In the interim, we've had not only one, but now two pre-K and nursery school groups look at potentially leasing that building from us. So we had one approach us shortly after the budget, the vote was turned down, and we've had another one recently come. So there is some potential interest in leasing the building. In full disclosure, we are vetting both of them now from all of the aspects of what's best for the town, what's best for the community. They are both short-term leases, so potentially short-term leases is what they're proposing. We haven't got, we've gotten some proposals from the first group. We are looking for potentially a proposal from the second group, and we'll communicate out as they go along. In best-case scenario, we would be keeping the fields for the community. The tenants would be paying for all expenses for buildings. And a playground, they would be paying for all expenses there and maintaining the property to a very acceptable level. So we would get rid of all our expenses for running that building. We would realize rent from the facility and keep the fields.
Let's talk, let's talk, we're gonna be, full disclosure, we're also going to disclose that the tenant is not really looking to give us rent on the building. Let's, let's do full disclosure. We'll talk about the project before you actually have an agreement principal. Let us be truthful with the community and let them know that the potential tenant is not proposing to actually give the district any rental income.
Actually, we don't know that on the second potential tenant at all, at this point.
Again, and to Mrs. LaRosa's point, this is all the wish list of what we would like seen presented, so we're working on proposals for both of them. So we don't have anything on the second tenant. We're working with one of the first potential group, but it's all a work in progress, and we'll share it as those details become available. Again, we don't look at this, you know, this potentially as maybe the long-term solution for the property. We still, we want to come back to the community and find out what the best option is, but it may be an option for us in the short term. So again, we're gonna weigh all those options as we go forward and do what's best in the interest of the students, the community, and from the financial aspect, so.
Okay. I would just like to make on the record suggestion, which I have done to the board in a number of emails and also in person, that we immediately convene community members group to come together and discuss the property and what it is that the community wants to see there. Put all options on the table and get those voices heard. I believe that they spoke loudly and said that they did not want the original project that we put forward, but at this time, I think it would be premature for this board to enter into any agreement with a tenant or a leasing company or anything of that nature without actually putting the community members in a room together and discussing it face-to-face.
Excuse me, excuse me. No, excuse me, please do not yell out, okay? This is a meeting, you can put in a card, and you will be called on, but we're not gonna yell out from the audience. And thank you.
It is my.
As a matter of fact, I run the meeting.
It is my suggestion that this board.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're not gonna do this. We're not gonna do this, you're gonna have a chance to.
Ladies and gentlemen, we would be more productive if we follow appropriate protocols. I definitely want to hear what the audience has to say.
We're gonna go into an inappropriate. On that, for executive session with the public president. That's appropriate public protocol, sir. You should check with your lawyer. Last time you made a leave, you went to executive session, then you came back and went into open session, and without members of the public view. That's appropriate, that's what you do appropriately. The superintendent didn't even turn to the board, and she sits there like she is, and you have her sitting in an early time of session to be reading the vitals that you created.
Sir, can you fill out a card, and we'll discuss that at the end of the meeting.
I'm not saying that you're not a member of the board.
I'm not?
You're not a member of the board. You're assuming you're in the school.
This is Mrs. Amory LaRosa speaking.
I'm sorry, but it's the superintendent, she can't see what's there.
I'm here, over here.
Okay, everybody stop. All right? We're gonna have a meeting. Yeah, okay.
But we are, we're just a line item.
And so that, the meeting concluded at 8:00 PM, and with additional, you know, we'll take any questions during the public session. Just if you fill out a card, you'll be happy to continue the Masara discussion at that time, so appreciate the feedback.
Okay, Mr. Campanello will discuss the meeting on the Special Ed Committee.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Special Ed Committee met on 6th at 08:30. The meeting was done by telephone, members present, Mrs. Dowling, Mrs. Morrison, Mr. McGinnis, and myself. We discussed special ed programs throughout the district. CSEs and annual reviews are continuing, going well. The special ed summer rating program was discussed, and special ed remote learning is discussed, and we secured it by 5:55.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello. Mrs. Pilati will discuss financial matters and business ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. The Treasury's report for the month of February had a beginning balance of $69,669,551.35 and an ending balance of $63,540,353.35. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4028 through 4042 for the general fund?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2021-22 contracts as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the surplus Ford truck?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2020-21 health services contracts as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2021-22 bid extensions as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution to accept the donation and related budget increase from Christina Elfante and Janet Arneau for a donation of $1,700 for the purchase of a rock display to be placed in the Manitowoc Elementary School courtyard?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of holding the annual reorganization meeting on July 6th, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the West Iceup High School? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the discussion of the 2021-22 regular meeting and planning session dates contained in your backup, any comments, any issues with any of the dates? Nope? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of the white-up lease agreement? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the 2020-2021 revised chief school physicians list? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Mrs. Geller. So I'd like to congratulate the 2020-2021 high school winter athletic teams who were recently awarded top sportsmanship honors in their respective division. These included our varsity boys swimming team coached by Matt Loudon and Ed Jablonski, our varsity wrestling coached by Nick Lugelia and Tom Longabardi, JV wrestling coached by John Ferrara, varsity girls basketball coached by Chris Dark and Kristen Darty, and JV boys basketball coached by JT Denonier. On Thursday, March 25th, 74 students were inducted into the World Languages Honor Society. This is particularly impressive given the challenges of the last two years. Congratulations to the 48 Spanish, 50 Italian, and 11 ASL students who were inducted, as well as their advisors Sarah Willman and Brittany Feluciano, and lead teacher Elise Patty. Today, we were notified that for the fourth year in a row, West Iceup has been recognized by the NAMM Foundation with a Best Community for Music Education Award. The foundation recognizes and celebrates school districts across the country for their support and commitment to music education and their efforts to assure access to music for all students as part of a well-rounded education. And only 300-plus districts are recognized each year and from across the country, and we are one of them for the fourth year in a row. So we're really very proud of our students and our staff, our faculty, and our administration. And finally, just a few reminders, on Tuesday, April 13th, we have our final budget workshop right here at Beach Street at 7:30. And on Thursday, April 15th, Mission B will present an online parent workshop that will focus on mindfulness practices at the secondary level, and that will help you and your children cope with anxiety and stress related to COVID. See the district website for more information and to register. And I'm sure Mrs. Finister will be tweeting it out as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Do you have any thoughts, please? Mr. Moore?
Mr. McCann, thank you for the update on Masara. Could you give an update on Masara on a monthly basis in your building and grounds?
I, this moment, I have actually updated it every month, whether it's been the Buildings and Grounds or during my report, and in various other meetings, but certainly.
Okay, thank you. Now, a little confused here on the tenant, prospective tenant that reached out to you in January. You've had how many discussions with them?
Three or four discussions.
Three or four discussions. Are any of those meetings, are there meeting minutes or documentation to any of those meetings?
Well, those would be considered negotiations or considered.
Okay, fine. Is, is the prospective tenant, Mr. McCann, in principle agreeing to make the improvements to the building?
That's still under negotiation, you know.
No, no.
Mrs. LaRosa, we do not discuss negotiations publicly.
So is the answer no?
We're not gonna call out in the middle of a meeting.
Is, is the answer no, or is the answer we can't because we're?
It's still, it's still a negotiation, so that's, you know, part of what's ongoing, correct?
Okay, fine. Is the prospective tenant, is it an elementary school? Is it, is it an elementary school?
We've got, well, we've got two of them. One is 18 months to 6th grade, and the other is nursery to everyday.
But the 18 months to 6th grade is the, the person you've had three or four meetings with, is that right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And are they looking to get in the building by September?
It's still part of negotiations, we gotta see how feasible that is. They both say as soon as possible, so we've just gotta see what's feasible, what as soon as possible to be.
Okay. And do the improvements to the building need to be done prior to them occupying the building?
Negotiating, I think some maybe, but some, you know, some of them could be ongoing, but that's, we're trying to find out what their actual final proposal is, and then what can be done, get them in on a timeframe.
Okay. Jamie Winkler's website shows that the Masara property is listed for $8 million. What direction has the board given Jamie Winkler since the January vote?
So Winkler is not attempting to sell the building at this point.
I'm just saying what's on the website, so that's not accurate, okay.
Obviously, we don't control what's on her website.
No, that's, thank you for clearing that.
I guess she didn't take it down.
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you for clearing that. In the past, Mr. Geller, you said that if these tenants don't come to fruition, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board, is that correct?
Yep.
What specifically is going back to the drawing board?
Looking at all of the potential options, opening it up to community discussion as would be required in a, as a community vote would be required in case of a sale. Basically looking at, you know, whether, anything that might be viable. Many of the things that we looked at originally, two, two-plus years ago. So that's been standalone homes, medical buildings, you know, unique.
So in light of the 77% to 23%. So in light of the 77% to 23% vote against apartments and condos, is that, would that still be considered in part of going back to the drawing board?
I would imagine it would not.
Okay. Is, is that a consensus from the board?
Yes. Clearly, that's not what the community wants to see there, so clearly, you know, I can't see us revisiting that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Ruane? Did I get that right?
No.
Sorry, keep your.
It's okay, it's a common, common mistake, it's Ruann, it just.
Ruann, I'm sorry, okay.
Good evening. I'm a 14-year resident of West Isle. I'm a Girl Scout leader, I'm a parent of a Manitowoc kindergartner and a fifth grader. And I'm here tonight representing fifth-grade parents across the district and to present you with a petition signed by over 330 of them, who all went exactly the same thing, which is as close to normal graduation ceremony as you can give them under their current circumstances. I'm joined tonight by some of those parents, and I would ask for them to stand if they're here so you can see their presence. In my professional life, I'm a labor and employment lawyer, and I represent school districts. I'm used to sitting on there with board members, and I recognize and I understand how difficult it is to be in your shoes. And as a result of my professional obligations, I'm also familiar with the existing COVID-19 restrictions and the guidance. Right now, the graduation ceremonies guidance is admittedly old, but even so, as of June 7th of last year, the state permitted outdoor graduations with up to 150 people. As of few days ago, outdoor, non-residential social gatherings can have up to 200 people, and 100 people indoors. Venues are permitted to reopen with even more numbers, and the numbers were even higher when we started implementing testing. The loosening of the restrictions demonstrates how far New York has come during the course of this pandemic, and I'm really proud of what this district was able to accomplish. In a matter of only a few months, we went from the idea of remote instruction being a foreign concept to being able to seamlessly transition to remote instruction due to COVID-19 closures. Yet despite all the things that we've accomplished here, fifth-grade parents and PTAs have been told that the decision has been made that just like last year, it's going to be another car parade for graduation. I've been to my share of car parades, and they were so much fun when it first started, at a time when you hadn't seen anybody in weeks or months, but now, really not so much. And if it turns out that what we've been told is not correct, and that a final decision hasn't been made, we want to be heard for you to understand our position. We aren't asking you for perfection. We understand perfection is not going to happen right now, but what we do want is progress. Students spend more time in elementary school than they do in middle school or high school. They start elementary school as babies, and they leave as pre-teens, or as my fifth grader told me this morning, on between. But it's an important milestone in their lives. Fifth graders missed out on so many activities that could have been commemorated in this final year of elementary school, so please, let's not add to the list of what's been taken from them. This might end up being the last graduation that a grandparent can attend, and sad to say, it might be the last one that a parent can attend. Let's not take away that opportunity. When I asked my own fifth grader, she would rather have a car parade graduation or a traditional graduation ceremony, she unequivocally chose a traditional ceremony. So of course, I'm a lawyer, I said, why? And she said, because it's better. And she's right. This district has demonstrated now for over a year that it can and continually will do better, and our fifth-grade parents understand our role also in doing better. So I'm proudly tonight, with my jacket off, displaying for you my first COVID vaccine vantage from yesterday with my sore arm, as a symbol of our commitment to you. We understand we need to wear our masks, we need to maintain social distance, wash our hands, and continue to do what needs to be done to beat this virus. And we know that this cannot be 100% normal graduation, but let us please stay on the course of doing better. The district has the ability to do more than did last year, and to do it safely. Give these students more than a car parade. Give these students an in-person graduation that is as close to normal as possible. That would be progress, and that's what we're looking for. Thank you for your consideration.
Tom.
Can I add to that? As a board member with two fifth graders graduating, I can promise you all that we will do everything in our power to obviously do what's best for the students and the community.
Yeah, listen, you know, we're, we're obviously going to be constrained by whatever the state allows, but within that context, we will do whatever we can as last year to make sure that all the students know that they're special.
And if you're willing to listen, we're willing to share our ideas, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Alessi?
Yeah. I actually wasn't planning on speaking until I heard the word digital for AP exams. So the other exams, Regents, ELA, Math, will all be in-person, but AP will be digital?
Yes, AP will be digital, and that is not a West Isle thing, that is an EP procedure, that their tests are digital for sure.
Okay. I thought the website said in-person or digital, we had a choice, no?
I do not believe so, I will check, but according to the information that we have received from, from the AP, it is digital. Actually, there are a few here that may be in school paper.
Yes.
But right now, they're planning to go digital. The majority of them are digital.
Just for the record, my girls took them last year. The most stressful experience is online AP exam. I just want you to know that.
Thank you, everybody. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session where the board will discuss personnel, negotiations, and litigation? At the conclusion of executive session, the board will convene public session to consider any items to which a vote is required.
So does that mean you have to leave, sir? Or are we going to be able to stay and leave in the back to the public session?
We are going to be going into the district office boardroom for executive session, actually for the library. We will open the, I don't know if we have anything, we may not come back to public session, depends if we have anything.
We have to leave, sir. And to close the meeting, if you can get the board to sign the whole.
Okay, stop, 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 all right? Stop.
Otherwise, I have to leave you in the hall.
Okay.
Not members of the board, sir. We have to leave.
All right, we're done, we're done shouting out. Okay, I asked you not to shout out a number of times, and we're done shouting out, all right? We return to executive, to open session, to close the meeting. If there are no items to vote on, okay, we open the doors, we're in public session, and we vote to end the session.
Public session, we, we're the public present.
Yes, and the public can be present.
We'll be here.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening. I'm Ms. LaRosa.